Good evening, welcome to the August 27th zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter-Fark, who is Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Nick Knackus, sorry, Knackus, Mr. Jay Minkera, Mr. Stephen Lionel, who is our Vice President, Mr. Robert Shaw, and I'm JP Boucher, and I'm acting as your Chairman tonight. This meeting is recorded by written transcript, audio tape, and video. We ask that you please direct all testimony into the microphone, and that only one person speak at a time. If you don't have tonight's agenda, it's on the podium on the side of the auditorium here. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests from the National Zoning Court in form of only variances, so there are no special exceptions. So I'll only go over the criteria for a variance tonight. So a variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for an approval of a variance are: One, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; Three, substantial justice is done; Four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and Five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, the minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear any and all scheduled cases, as long as a quorum of three voting Board members are present this evening. And we have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received from Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part of tonight's meeting is called, is what we call, the public hearing. This is where the applicant and the citizens address this Board and speak to the merits of this case. The order of testimony is as follows. One, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. The timer will count you down from that, from the fifteen minutes. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then a representative, and only one person of those in opposition or with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We ask that you please direct all testimony to this Board, and not to anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they have to be directed to the Board, and we'll get them answered for you. The second part of tonight's meeting is called, is what we call, the public meeting. This is where the Board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you please silence your cellphones, and if you do need to have a conversation, we ask that you step out in the hall. The acoustics are excellent in this room, we can hear everything that's being said in the auditorium. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions before we get started? Seeing none. I will call the first case. First case is for Marjorie Sands, 104 Conant Road. Description is Marjorie A. Sands, owner of 104 Conant Road, Sheet C, Lot 61, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the ten-foot required right-side yard setback to construct and attach twenty-by-twenty garage. It's in the R9 zoning district. Is somebody here to present that case? Come on up, and we ask that you give your name and address for the, for the record.
My name is Margie, not Marjorie.
I'm, I'm sorry.
A Sands, that's good, all right. And the address is 104 Conant Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062.
And Mrs. Sands, I understand that Mr. Fark has let me know that you are now requesting just a carport instead of a garage?
Correct.
All right, so we'll note that, that it's a...
I, I sent it in.
Yes, ma'am, we have that.
Oh, okay.
So it is the opinion of, of staff that, that it's still good to go?
Same encroachment.
Same encroachment.
It's a little structured, so it's...
Does anybody have any questions or issues with that? Okay, all right, we'll proceed.
It's attached to the, it's going to be attached to the...
We understand.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So go ahead, tell us what you want to do.
Okay, what I'm proposing to do is to put an attached carport in that area, twenty-by-twenty, and I need a five-foot variance to do so. Reason being that I fell last December, December, and I ended up with broken ribs and smashed my head, and you want to see dance, I'll show them to you. But it's also, where it's situated goes uphill from my house, so it's very slippery because also the city, when they fix that place, they changed, they changed the way the road curves. It's a, it's a problem curve there. Anyway, so this way, I can go directly from my house into the, under the carport, and I won't be on this, on the road, because I'll be going right directly from my house into the carport, into my car, which will bring me up the hill. So that's why I'm requesting it, actually, for health reasons. Otherwise, I'm stuck in the house with the ice all over the place. I'm putting it simply. I mean, I don't know, and are there any questions that you want to ask me?
Are there any questions for the applicant?
In the, your original application, you have a picture of, of a, of a garage, you know, that was built, obviously, like a model or something. So what is your, your carport going to look like?
I have a picture of that, that the construction company gave me.
We'll just go to bar for a minute, and we'll pass it around. So, so ma'am, just to follow up on Mr. Lionel's question, so it'll still have a peaked roof, right?
Well, it's going to be attached, for instance, that's the side of my house, it'll be coming from the roof, coming down.
Right, right.
It's slanted down, it's not a, not a peaked roof.
Okay, it's like a shed roof?
Yes, it's like a shed roof. So right now, you just have a driveway?
I have a driveway, yes.
Up to that. I'm curious, why did you decide to, to change from a garage to a carport? Not that it matters to us, but...
Well, I, well, I'm honest, I'll tell you what, what it was. They wanted as much money to build the garage as I paid for the house originally. So it was money, if you really want to know the truth. And this is about one-sixth of the price.
And, and looking at your, your lot plan, it seems that the reason you need the, the variance is that, that side of the lot is angled, right? So it's the back corner, it's the back corner of the carport that would be encroaching. The front corner does not?
No, you're correct.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm kind of like stuck in the house in the winter. I'm an old lady, and I, I walk like little steps trying to get out.
Does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, ma'am, you can just sit down for now?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. Anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or oppositions to, to this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
This is fine, and as I commented earlier, the reason she needs the variance is the, the lot lines are not parallel, and so it, it's quite a bit of a slant on the right side, and the back corner, what encroaches into the, into the setback. We grant variances for things like this all the time, and this isn't any different to me.
I, I would agree, and, and just add that, you know, it is a, I think it's a reasonable customary use. There are, of course, this is a carport, it's different, there certainly are other garages in the neighborhood, and I just also add that the dimensions for two cars are about as small as you can be. So there was really, seems to have been an effort to keep the encroachment minimal.
Yeah, I agree as well. The site visit, I was looking more for garages than carports, but there are other garages in the area, and a carport seems like would be even less intrusive than a garage, so. And it's a minor encroachment, so I support it.
I concur with my colleagues.
I also agree, and I think to meet the code, we'd have to pull the carport so much forward now that we now don't have access to the side-back door, it would be so front-forward, right, in the property, that it wouldn't make sense, so. All right, so anybody like to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion, on behalf of the owner, Margie Sands, address is 104 Conant Road, Sheet C, Lot 61, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the ten-foot required right yard setback to construct and attach twenty-by-twenty carport. The Board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, the right lot line being at an angle, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method. We believe that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We believe it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Okay, give me a second. Mr. Minkera? Seconded by Mr. Minkera, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of this application? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, ma'am. Application's been approved. Thanks for coming. With that, I'll close case number, number one. And Mr. Shaw, just a few seconds to catch up. The owner is Stephen and Lisa Newt. The address is L., Almont Street. Description is Stephen M. and Lisa A. Newt, owners of L. Almont Street, Sheet 103, Lot 103, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for the following: One, a minimum land area, six thousand square feet required, five thousand square feet existing; and two, minimum lot width, sixty feet required, fifty feet proposed. Both request to construct a new single-family home on a non-conforming lot of record. It's in the RB zoning district. Is there somebody here to present that case? Welcome again, just your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Newt, Eight, was it Eighteen Hummingbird Lane, Hudson, New Hampshire.
And Lisa Newt, Eighteen Hummingbird, Hudson.
We, we've owned this property on Almont Street for thirty-some-odd years, and I just want to give a little bit of a history, then I, then I'll address the, the request itself. I grew up in Nashua, lived on Almont Street. My family, my parents obviously lived on Almont Street, my grandparents, both sides of the family did, uncles, aunts, and cousins. So growing up, there was, when I left at age twenty-one, we ended up getting married. It was kind of nice to go back to the community where I grew up and be with family. So over the thirty-some-odd years that we owned the property, you know, we have obviously cut the, cut the grass, raked the leaves, take snow off the roof of the shed, there's a shed on the property, as well as pick up trash or litter that occurs. So we've taken care of the property very well over the time. This last spring, this spring here in March, I believe it is, that bad windstorm that we had caused our shed, the roof, to get extremely damaged. I had to take the roof, take it apart, get rid of it, and for safety reasons, all the walls around the shed, I removed that so kids wouldn't, you know, go in there and cause any, any damage to themselves. So all that's left is really a floor and framing of the shed. But anyway, at, at this point in our lives, all my relatives have either passed away or have moved. So literally, I know nobody in the neighborhood anymore, and so we're looking at moving on with the property and giving it an opportunity for someone to build a home for themselves there. With that said, doing the research, and I know very little about ordinances and stuff like that, there's, I did the research on that Section 190-16, Table 16-3, which seems to be the key to everything, at least what I saw. We lacked two pieces of, to be able to have a buildable lot, and as Mr. Boucher said, that we're, we're suffering from ten-feet frontage on the property for the street, and then overall, short by one thousand square feet for the, for the lot itself. So doing some research, we found out that on that block of land that exists on Almont Street, which as you can see on Attachment A that I provided, that we're not alone with fifty-by-a-hundred square footage, or fifty-feet frontage. There are actually four other homes that exist with fifty-feet frontage, with a hundred feet deep, which is identical to us. As a matter of fact, the lot next to us is the same as our lot, with a home on it, single-family home, and the lot behind us is also fifty-by-a-hundred with a single-family home. Now, that block of land on Almont consists of thirteen homes, so if you think of thirteen plots, out of those thirteen plots, five plots are really fifty-by-a-hundred. Along with that, you'll also notice on Attachment B, that we do have, it's kind of, I won't say a mixed use, but the neighborhood is, also has duplexes, as well as, there's a condex on that same block, and one of those duplexes border the land that we own. So with that said, I'm trying to meet the requirements that's laid out on those five points. Won't reread what I wrote, but just recapping it, is that the intent is, wouldn't change it, alter the neighborhood, because we're requesting to be able to have a buildable lot so that a single-family home could be built on it, which would be identical to character to the neighborhood. Being the lot is smaller as the other four lots, the, I know there's other rules that say how much open space you're allowed, how much square footage you're allowed, so all that would fit in, that it would be obviously a, a small or single-family home, which also makes it more affordable for someone to, to live there. It wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood, because it would fit in. The, the land itself being developed does fit in, and if we left the land, if we didn't get the variances to change it, the land becomes basically unusable and vacant, which I think would be a detriment both to the neighborhood and, and the City of Nashua, with the opportunity to be able to have housing that's affordable. That's, that's about it. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, your application was very thorough, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Come on up, sir, give us your name and address.
My name is Joseph Thomas. We live on Seventy-three Monroe Street. We don't know the Newts, but we wanted to come tonight. We, we think it's a smart move that he makes good use of the land. What we can speak to, although we do not know them, he was responsible when there was an issue with the shed and the freeze-up that he talked about, and he did take down walls that looked like they weren't, shouldn't stay up. So I, I can only hope in, that he does the same thing when he puts the house on. I have no reason to know, any reason he wouldn't. The locate, our home, Seventy-three Monroe, is actually right behind the lot the Newts own, so it is one of those small lots. And the, we did not build the house, but it was responsibly built. It has, it's split the difference between the, the two sides that remain, it's about five feet offset, so I'm sure whoever built the house did the proper variance request to the city. Also, what they did, which I, again, would hope the Newts also do, he, he did a good, he went far more forward with the house towards the street, and so the house actually is very pleasant. It fits nice in the neighborhood, and that, as he said, there's three other lots with homes in addition to ours, and it fits pretty nice. So, yeah, we would be in favor, they've, they've been responsible as far as we can see. And again, I did not tell the Newts I was going to be speaking tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody, oh, ma'am, come on up. Just your name and address for the record.
Bernice Thomas. I live at Seventy-three Monroe Street. I only wanted to know how far from the back fence the house would be built.
Mr. Fark.
They would just have to meet the setbacks, which I believe is ten feet in that zoning district? Ten or, ten or twenty, actually, maybe it's twenty feet, I think. It's twenty feet. I don't have my code with me, but they would have to meet the setbacks.
So, so every neighborhood has an envelope which it can build in, there has to be setbacks around. So the, a builder, a person can do anything within that. If not, they would have to come to us for a variance. But again, I think what we're hearing, and I think what our experience is, is that when there's new homes that go up, they're, they're putting them in the envelope, they're not, you know, pushing them back. You know, it's, they would have to come in front of us.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like five feet from the, our fence?
No, no, no.
Okay. That's my only one.
But we're thinking it's, it's twenty, but Mr. Fark could verify that, if you could... Mr. Lionel's looking up now.
RB, RB's on, RB.
So twenty feet, I can't come closer than twenty feet.
Oh, that's plenty. Okay. Great, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Any questions? Thank you for coming. Anybody else like to speak with, in, in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with this. I mean, I think this is one of the, I mean, especially the fact that this, this lot has been in their possession for so long, but it's clearly, this is the only way they can get viable use of the property, and most likely, it seems that it was probably, it would have been viable, you know, to build in the origin, some of the original zoning code, you know, as we see, you know, rezoning and different changes and setbacks, even, even lot size, et cetera, that, and clearly, this, this fifty-by-a-hundred was meant to be somewhat of a standard, and it's also seems somewhat clear that perhaps a lot of these lots then were basically doubled up, and, you know, we've seen that in other neighborhoods as well. But certainly, I think it's, it's not inconsistent with what's going on in the neighborhood. It's also really the only way they can get, you know, use of this property, other than leaving it as a vacant lot, so. And I think that, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Lionel.
I concur with what Mr. Shaw said.
Thank you.
I, I concur also, and it's certainly compatible with the character of the neighborhood, and of course, a single-family home is permitted to use in these areas.
I agree as well.
And I also support the application. Anybody like to make a motion? I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for Stephen and Lisa Newt of, the address is L. Almont Street. Description is Stephen M. and Lisa A. Newt, owners of L. Almont Street, Sheet 103, Lot 103, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for the following: One, minimum land area, six thousand square feet required, five thousand square feet existing; and two, minimum lot width, sixty feet required, fifty feet proposed. Both request to construct a new single-family home on a non-conforming lot of record. It's in the RB zoning district. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. We spoke about the fact that this is an existing neighborhood, a very old neighborhood, that at one time, there were lots of record, or probably were lots at that, the size that it is right now, fifty-by-a-hundred. We also spoke about that there is evidence in this block and several surrounding blocks of this neighborhood that have identical lot sizes. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and that substantial justice would be served. With that, I make a motion to approve the area variance for Stephen and Lisa Newt. Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Application's been approved. Highly unlikely, but just be aware, there's that thirty-day window of appeal, but I highly doubt it, okay? Thank you. With that, I'll close case number two, and let Mr. Shaw catch up. The owner is Michelle McGadden and Chris Beagle. It's Twenty-seven Waltham Drive. Description is Michelle McGadden and Chris Beagle, owners of Twenty-seven Waltham Drive, Sheet A, Lot 584, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to eighteen feet into a twenty-five-foot required front yard setback on Peach Drive to construct and attach sixteen-by-twenty-four garage addition and entryway. It's in the RA zoning district. Come on up.
Hello.
Say your name and address, and you can pull the mic down or pull it out.
Sorry, I'm the shortest one here.
You can just pull the mic out and hold it.
Okay.
That would, that would probably be the best thing.
Michelle McGadden, Twenty-seven Waltham Drive.
Okay.
Christopher Beagle, Twenty-seven Waltham Drive.
Our application before you is to build a small entryway and a one-car garage on our property in Nashua. My parents bought this house, new construction, in nineteen-seventy-two, and that's where I grew up. And after my mom passed away, my husband and I bought the house, and we're in the process of renovating the interior now, which we did get a permit for, and we're looking to build the sixteen-by-twenty-four garage and eight-foot entryway into the house. And I attached the plans from our builder for your consideration.
Okay.
That's it in a nutshell.
Okay. So you're here because you have basically two front yard setbacks, right?
Yes. Yes.
So talk about, talk, so, tell us just about what, if there was anything else considered, or what challenges you have on this lot.
The challenge is, it's an oddly shaped lot. The corner... The corner, actually, it says Peach Drive, but it's actually where Peach and Elgin sort of merged, sort of in the middle of my yard. So it's a long slope around the corner, and there's nowhere else we could build or put a garage. And I don't know if this is accurate or not, but I think we have one of the smaller lots in our neighborhood because of that strange sort of slice on the side there. So we have a limited amount to work with.
Any other questions? Mr. Mincara.
The garage itself at 16 feet is not terribly wide. Can you talk to me a bit about the purpose of the breezeway, the second entrance?
The entryway specifically is for, we have ailing parents and grandparents. My grandfather is 95 years old, and they use walkers, and it's very difficult. We don't have an entryway into our home. Sort of a typical ranch, built in the 70s in that neighborhood, and you walk in, and there's a maybe four-by-four-foot ledge, and then you just walk into the kitchen. And the same thing in the front as well. When you walk into the front door, there's a wall blocking you. You have to kind of go off to the side. There's a closet right there. We had considered actually removing the closet to make the entryway into the front, but that caused a whole lot of other very expensive issues with the load-bearing area. And removing the closet, then we would lose a bedroom, because the bedroom wouldn't have the closet anymore. So we did look into that front entryway, opening it up, but it just didn't work.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Take a seat for now.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? I didn't get those.
You should. You know, they were, they're at the end of.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's all the same letter, they're just signed.
Okay, that's what I was, okay, I thought it was just, okay. So before I move on, in support of this application, there are several, so basically, these are people that are, we are the owners of an abutting property. We have reviewed the plans for a garage and entryway addition, as requested by Christopher Beagle and Michelle McGadden. We do not object to the variance request, so they are obviously in favor of the request. They are Mark Mahoney of 70 Elgin Street, Shannon Mahoney of 70 Elgin Street, Paul LeBlanc of 25, 24 Waltham Drive, Paulette LeBlanc, 24 Waltham Drive, Tonya Hanson and Nicholas Hanson of 25 Peach Drive, Donald Dupree of 26 Waltham Drive, and Claire Dupree of 26 Waltham Drive, Eric and Nanette Robinson of 72 Elgin Drive, Christopher and Lisa Lemay of 25 Waltham Drive, Philip and Misty Carpenter of 67 Elgin Street, and Joseph and Nancy Stafford of 24 Kennedy Drive. So those are all in favor of this application. Okay, so again, I'll just ask again, is there anybody that has questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw.
I mean, I think this, the thing that, you know, this case is truly, I think, all about is the very, not only a corner lot, but then even a kind of exaggerated, odd shape.
Sorry, that was me. What do you think about her?
Exaggerated odd shape to the lot itself. And so I think the structure and what they're doing, as Mr. Mincara, kind of even part of his inquiry, it's not a large garage. And so, and I think, you know, they explained the issue about how to get essentially a more workable entryway due to, you know, aging, older parents, grandparents, and explored, I think, what seems like the reasonable other alternatives, and pretty much were left with what they are doing. And so I think with all those factors in mind, I think this is quite a reasonable request.
Thank you. I will agree with you, Mr. Shaw. Then the odd-shaped lot and the two frontages, and also, not that it really bears on it, but it's a part of a neighborhood which, there's really no way to go after there. You know, it's kind of, I looked at it like there's going to be really, there's no traffic there, so to me, it's not like they're putting something where it could be, you know, it could be in the way of somebody driving a boulder lawn or hitting something, so, yeah. Anybody else?
I just add that, you know, I appreciate the letters of support from the neighbors. I think that's helpful as well.
Okay, thank you.
I agree as well. I think it meets all the requirements, and it's a strangely shaped lot with the double front, front yard, which makes it difficult.
Yeah, thank you.
I also concur.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion?
All right, I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Michelle McGadden and Chris Beagle. Address is 27 Waltham Drive, Sheet A, Lot 584, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to 18 feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct an attached 16-foot by 24-foot garage addition and entryway. This is in the R.A. zone. The Board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. It's a corner lot, which means there are two front yard setbacks, and it's also a very oddly shaped lot with a rounded corner, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method, other than the variance. We believe that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not affect, adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We have a number of letters in support of the application from abutting neighbors. The Board believes that it is not contrary to public interest and that substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Seconded by Mr. Canakis. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Application's been approved. Again, just be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal, but there's nobody here, it's highly unlikely. You never know. But congratulations. Thank you very much. With that, I'll close case number three. And we'll give Mr. Shaw a few minutes just to catch up. Okay, we had some meeting minutes from August 13th. Does anybody have any issues, questions, or corrections or anything?
I do not.
All right. Nothing?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the August 13, 2019 minutes, meeting minutes. Seconded by Mr. Mincara. All in favor? Anyway, is there any discussion? Sorry. None? All in favor? Five to nothing. Thank you. All right, so we have an agenda for the next meeting. We'll see if there's any regional impact. Does anybody see anything on here that's remotely, any issues with regional impact?
Probably not. I was just going to ask Carter if I could. For the first one, it notes removal of a building and to construct two new buildings. Do we know what those buildings are?
They are going to be uses that are permitted uses. They'll be retail in nature, retail office in nature. They'll meet the ordinance as far as use. And I believe they'll also meet the setbacks as well. It's just that they're going to be working within the wetland buffer, because it's so close.
Where, 546 Amherst Street? What's there now?
It's the, it was the old Southern New Hampshire. College. College building.
Oh, that one.
The two-story building, like right near, right just before Round Pond as you're going out of town.
Yep.
Been vacant for a while. Yes. Crossing the Green Tower.
So no regional impact? All right, so we see no regional impact. Okay, is there any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
Need to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor? Five to nothing. We're adjourned at 7:10. Thank you.